And then how would we help them prioritize the things that aren't yet under works? And so I'd like for us to have an agenda item where we can provide that guidance. Staff is already carrying a lot of these. I know we've had some conversation about neighborhood empowerment zones, but I don't exactly know where we are on the process. So giving you guys a chance to work this, come back to us with an agenda item when you've worked through this list and said, this is what's in progress, this is its status, this is its timeline. These are the things that we've not yet prioritized. How would you like to prioritize them, council? Anybody want to add or shift that? Okay, good?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your work on this. It is going to be very helpful in steering our city. Thanks. Andrew, thank you for the work on this project, too. The next item is item 1D, which is a discussion of our point in time count. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. We have Jason Rittlesberger, our Director of Community Development, here to talk about the point in time count that took place in January. Jason?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Do you have our... There we go. Thank you. So I wanted to give you guys an update on the winter 2022 point in time count. So what is the point in time count? Want to remind you that that's a 24-hour snapshot of our sheltered and unsheltered homeless in the city of Amarillo. We conduct two a year. HUD mandates that we conduct one, which is in the January count, so that was the one we just completed. But we always like to do that second one, so we get good data. Again, this one is going to be reporting on the January 28th point in time count. So HUD uses this data to understand the number of people experiencing homelessness in our city and the effectiveness of the programs that they have us administer. And then, of course, the funding needs that we need to support our Amarillo Continuum of Care. So we utilize the Homeless Management Information System to go through our data, to make sure that we're cleaning that up really good, to make sure we're not counting people twice. We utilize the Counting Us mobile app. Makes it very, very easy to do this. We do our interviews over the app. It's been very good. We've been using this for the past three or four years now. This is our actual count here. You'll see the total there is 539. The numbers did go up a little bit. The numbers I want to call to your attention, you see there 171 of those were sheltered. And the very concerning number is our unsheltered total of 368. I've given you some examples of what unsheltered looks like, the people living in the streets, tents, vehicles, and other places not meant for habitation. I broke down the sheltered count to give you an idea of where our sheltered individuals are staying. Anywhere from 59 down to 7 in those various locations there. A little bit further digging into the numbers, we've got our number of adults there. You see, over age 18 was 467, children 50. I always like to call to attention whenever we talk about the children under 18. You see there that the predominant number of those are in shelters. Our city is very good and our resources in the city are very good about when we see anyone with children, families with children, that they don't stay homeless in unsheltered situations for very, very long. We prioritize those to get them into some kind of shelter or even into housing very quickly. You see, we broke it down by gender. And then chronically homeless, you know that that is a number that we've been very focused on in the past few years. That number is a little bit higher at 43. That's about an 8% of our population is chronically homeless. So it's a little bit higher, but we are still doing a very good job of focusing on the chronically homeless. And then again, our veterans. We still have a by-name list, so we know every single veteran that is out there homeless, whether they're in a shelter or unsheltered. We know them by name. And we are working, we have a group that works through those names every month to try to go through the barriers that they've got to make sure that we get them into some kind of shelter or moving them on into homes. There are a lot of resources to get our veterans into homes. We do have some challenges, but we work through those and work through those individually with them. I wanted to show you a comparison of our last three counts. These are all within the last two, I'm sorry, last year, so from winter 2021. The sheltered was 191, went down to 183, and now it's down to 171. You see, our sheltered numbers are going down. Our unsheltered numbers are going up, 304 up to 368 this past count. Those are our numbers. You can see that we rose about 40 from this past summer. A couple of interesting facts, or one particularly interesting fact that I wanted to know was, did our numbers go up recently because of COVID? And so that was a question that was in our interviews. And actually, we only had 15 of our individuals that identified COVID as being a cause of their homelessness, whether that's medical or, you know, losing a job or something like that. This is just kind of a graph to kind of show you. The one I'm always watching is that orange line there. I'm sorry, the gray line, actually, the unsheltered. It was originally lower than the orange line, which was the sheltered. It's now risen where it's the predominant numbers are unsheltered. Those are the ones that we're seeing out in the streets, the tents that are popping up in the various parking lots and things like that. Missed that, I think there's about 85 volunteers and about 40 teams that assisted with our count again this year. This count can't be done without those volunteers. And those are the ones that are out there on the streets, helping us locate the unsheltered. It's a very difficult process. Like I say, it's over a 24-hour period. We do that from approximately 8:00 AM to 8:00 AM the following morning. So we've got teams out there in the middle of the night that are counting. Yeah, so it's very helpful that we've got those volunteers and it couldn't be done without them, so. Have any questions?
Jason, do you think our number's going up because we're getting better at counting? Or our number's going up because the population is shifting? Is it a combination of those things? It can't be simple. I know the answer's not simple.
I don't think it's... You're right, it's not simple. I don't, I would be more concerned if the number was like, say, 100 or 150 higher. I think that that's a... We do have a little bit of a better count that we do. We do find people a little bit better. But I think that we've been doing that for a couple of years, so I think our count is pretty solid. I think that we are getting a more influx, a number of people that are unsheltered. I think that we're seeing that across the country, that a lot of municipalities are seeing unsheltered homeless. So that's just something we're going to have to kind of pay attention to. And what are we doing in order to kind of help mitigate that?
I know you're working on strategies and you're not ready to talk about that today, so I'm not going to put you on the spot there. But we're looking forward to soon having a discussion item agenda for you to come and talk about the strategies, what you, and not just your team inside community development, but it's actually a citywide team, working together on some solutions, so we're looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Item 1E is to discuss the Planning and Zoning Commission's postponement of the zoning subdivision ordinance revision project. Mr. City Manager?
All right, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make a real brief introduction. Then I'm going to hand it to Andrew to kind of walk us through some recommendations. But we have been working on the zoning code for coming up on three years now. We are, a little bit of note about zoning codes, is that they are required to be consistent with the comprehensive plan in any city. Comprehensive plan, like we said, was modified in 2010. And our zoning code currently is not consistent with our zoning codes. We wanted, one, make sure that the proposed zoning code is comprehensive, is consistent with the comprehensive plan and what was originally proposed for conversation with P&amp;Z. And then ultimately, it would have been in front of council, was consistent with the comprehensive plan. After, late in the process, we had a lot of input from the public, from P&amp;Z, from developers, and from the DIES requesting a number of changes. So what we did is we worked to incorporate all of those changes, every one that we possibly could, into the final draft of the zoning code that was to be considered by P&amp;Z, which ultimately ended up being postponed. The challenge is that that modified zoning code was no longer consistent with the comprehensive plan. So we wouldn't, by state law, we wouldn't be able to adopt it. So what we are going to, and I'm going to just bottom line up front, what we're going to propose is that we postpone further consideration of the zoning code until we complete the comprehensive plan process. Letting that draft zoning code, as we've finally considered it, inform the comprehensive plan process, so that we can make sure that the comprehensive plan will allow the types of uses in the areas that, in the zoning categories that our community wants. So we want to make sure that the comprehensive plan facilitates the zoning code that our community wants. And then we will do the zoning code process to make sure that, and make sure that it is consistent with whatever zoning code, or I'm sorry, whatever comprehensive plan comes out of this comprehensive plan process that will be in front of you to kick off here very soon. So I've really taken most of Andrew's thunder, but Andrew, just walk us through in a more succinct way than what I did and hopefully in a more understandable way than what I said.
That's perfect. I should have just been clicking.
I did want to give some insight into the history of what we're talking about. And it wasn't something that came about accidentally or without public input and a lot of effort on the part of the consultants, the community, the teams that were helping, the staff and the consultants go through this process. But we also understand that a lot of input did come in there at the end. We want to respect that as well. So then there's also the state statute concerns with comprehensive plans. So we're working to make all those pieces fit together to make something that everyone can be pleased with.
All right. And first, I did want to apologize upfront for those that were at the P&amp;Z meetings. I did say there would be a public hearing today on the project, but our legal notice was very particular and said that it was only if it was approved by P&amp;Z. So that's why there was no public hearing scheduled today. But we did want to have this discussion item as far as next steps are concerned. And Jared touched on a lot of it, but the original project goals were to implement the comprehensive plan as adopted in 2010. When this kicked off, we were five to six years removed. Due to COVID and working on the North Heights Plan, there were some delays, which is why it's almost three years in, and now we're almost 12 years removed from the comprehensive plan. But the goal was to implement that plan. The consultants came in and did a zoning assessment and got our feedback based upon that plan, because there were a number of meetings back in 2010 that really set the vision and the goals for the city moving forward. And then as far as the consultant's role, it was really to hone in on modernizing the zoning ordinance, adding some of those new uses we haven't seen, making it easier, consolidating the information, adding graphics, and just more user-friendly in general. As far as the progress of that project, it did kick off in June 2019. And there were a number of steps that the consultants went through as far as the assessment and the modules, which were the sections of the zoning code as it was drafted. We had the original consolidated draft in January 2021. And had some review meetings as we worked through it in March and October. That was the delay as we were working through the North Heights rezoning initiative. And then we had the most recent drafts in January and February. Skipped a few slides. As far as the project meetings, we have had a lot of citizen and developer and builder participation throughout the process, kicking it off back in June 2019. These are a list of all the days that we held meetings. We had focus groups, we had sort of council meetings, public meetings. Adding them all up, we ended up having 18 meetings total up until the most recent postponement. And I also went back and just to check how much involvement we had in the 2010 comprehensive plan. They had 11 meetings on that project, as well as seven stakeholder interviews. So all of these planning processes involve a lot of feedback. But through that is getting the word out, making sure people understand what we're working on and where the opportunities are to provide feedback throughout that process. As far as the comprehensive plan that Jared discussed, as far as what we are recommending to focus, shift focus back to the comprehensive plan. During last year's budget, the city council approved funding for that project, knowing that it has been 10-plus years, and that's something that should be updated five to 10 years as well, just to make sure you're still implementing the policies and recommendations that the city and citizens want to see for their community. So we are currently going through the RFP process. We just completed interviews with the finalists this week and waiting on their final submittals. And then we would be bringing forth a recommendation for a contract for a consultant. But really, what that one, that project focuses on, it's updating that plan. It's the big picture and vision and the goals for the future growth and enhancement of the community. How do you handle development and redevelopment? Where does that occur? It also addresses the zoning code and what kind of new uses you might want to see, where you'd like to see them, accessory dwelling units, tiny homes. Those are conversations we would be able to reintroduce to the community now that we're hearing a lot of the feedback of pros and cons of each. So as we've gone through this process, what we think, what we think we're hearing, if you wait long enough, you're going to hear the opposite. So we really need more engagement beyond the small sample size that we're getting on the zoning code. The comprehensive plan would be much larger in scope as far as bringing in the community, having surveys, getting that additional feedback. So it's not just those that show up to the meeting. We value that. But there are 200,000 people we're hoping to hear from throughout this process, because this sets the vision and the priorities for the next 30 years. And if we don't at least get a good swath of the whole community, we might end up bringing a recommendation to council that the next day you hear a lot of feedback. We do not want tiny homes in our community. We just don't want them, period. So those are the things that we've learned as we've gone through this process, getting closer to adoption, that there are differences of opinion that are exceeding what we heard in 2010. So now we know we've gone long enough without updating that plan, that we really need to regroup with the community, engage them, and learn more of what they want to see citywide. As far as next steps, again, Jared mentioned Planning and Zoning Commission did vote to postpone the item. They wanted to set up a subcommittee to continue working on the project, to consider the feedback that was heard. I think what we'd hope to accomplish is pivoting with those that wanted to volunteer and hopefully put them on this comprehensive plan, those P&amp;Z commissioners, knowing that it's going to accomplish the ultimate goal about being the zoning code. Because once we update the comp plan, really, that's the time to get feedback. It's not when you're drafting the code. It's, we need to take that information, put it in the code, and bring it forward to adoption. Fine-tuning things here and there, but it's not for those major changes of, do we want tiny homes or not? Do we like accessory dwelling units? Those are really decided at the comp plan time. And then we're just implementing it, codifying it, so that's an opportunity for developers in the future.
I think one thing we'd want to do is, you know, I mentioned we did everything we could to accommodate all of the input. One of the challenges with zoning, with comp plan, really with anything that's this large and far-reaching, is that we're not going to have a unanimous recommendation from our community on things. You even heard some of that during public address. We have a lot of our community that wants to be able to do a short-term rental anywhere. We have some of our community that wants to have a registration process for that short-term rental, so they know where it's going to be, and maybe so they even have an approval, an ability to approve, whether or not, or to at least contribute to that conversation on whether or not a short-term rental is going to be close to them. We had a number of people want more regulation. There weren't many. I wouldn't say there was a lot. I would say most people wanted more flexibility. We wanted to build that in every way possible. What we were finding was that there's very, it was very, our comp plan wasn't consistent with what was being requested. I think if we can go through this process, and I think if anything, the amount of input late in the zoning code rewrite process has engaged and activated a large chunk of our community, which we can use through this comprehensive plan process. We will need to keep those people engaged. We need them engaged early in the process rather than late in the process. And I think if we can communicate anything to our community, to our developing community, to our real estate community, to our homeowner community, to just our taxpayers in general, we want to make sure that every product that we come out through this, and this, when I say every product, I'm not talking amorphously every product. I'm talking about our comprehensive plan, followed by our zoning code, assisted by our PDP process, our Partnership for Development Progress. All of these things have to work together in a complementary way, and they cannot be mutually, or they can't be contradictory. So we are going to work to make sure that all those things happen. I think that to, from a staff standpoint, we were working on engagement obviously enough. I think they worked hard. I think we weren't as effective as we needed to be to be able to have the input and participation for everyone we needed. So we're going to make this one of our primary innovation. We're working on innovative programs, and we're going to develop a multidisciplinary team that's going to come up with an innovative way to engage our community through these processes, because we cannot do it without their input, not just late, but early. And that same engagement and communication is going to happen with city council, with P&amp;Z, and everyone who has a stake in this process.
Andrew, anything to add?
Just touching on, of course, we're still evaluating the comp plan and the differences. I did want to point out the neighborhood plans, which you have, the fourth neighborhood plan on your agenda. That is actually an amendment to the comprehensive plan, so that is newer information we've received, which we're also hearing is conflicting with what we've heard the last couple of months. So even through the comp plan update, we're going to have to bring in our neighborhood plan areas and just have touchpoints with them as well and make sure where they are in the process as far as impact of some of these changes. And then as far as the comprehensive plan timeline and moving forward, based on what we see in the RFPs, it's anywhere from a 12- to 16-month process to complete. I'd lean more towards 16 months, just so we have the time to really communicate when we're holding those meetings. And really, we'll be working with the consultant, but I hope to have those outlined so upfront. Talking about innovation, know what those are, so you're not finding out a month ahead of time. Just schedule out the year in advance. Here's when we're hoping to hold them consistently, so people know when to come to the meetings. So I think that'll help.
Are you going to schedule time to have a pandemic in the middle of it?
Hopefully not.
Okay.
Hopefully it doesn't come back up.
I was just going to recommend you not schedule that, okay?
Yes, and we pivoted on the zoning code and went virtual meetings, and that didn't pan out as well as we'd hoped either. But yes, as Jared said, we've seen so much more involvement, and I think it really proves the process worked. If it ends up delaying a little bit, it did work, because now we've got the communication taking place. And a lot of what we heard was take a little bit more time on this. So I think it's a win-win for everybody involved that we're going to move down this path to starting the comp plan first.
Questions, council? Councilmember Stanley?
Yes, I just have a comment. So Jared, I really appreciate you being willing to say like, we didn't engage, we didn't ask, but...
But I don't think that's what he said.
That's not true.
Okay, because he didn't say that.
We, you did, and here at the end, I just want to compliment our staff and our city manager on how much engagement you had and how willing to accommodate those requests and those needs and the different viewpoints. And so we're here now, moving forward, I think in a good way. And so, I mean, I don't want to say I couldn't be happier, but like, I'm very pleased that we're going to take some time and that this is going back through. And I think you'll have that engagement with your citizenry and your population. And so I really appreciate staff and your willingness to listen. And not just listen and then push forward with whatever you'd already put all your work in. You really went back and you looked for ways to say yes and let's figure this out and let's tweak this. And so that's created more work, but this is what we want. And so I really appreciate your time in it and the city manager's direction on it.
Absolutely. It's definitely a product for the community, not on staff, so we want to make sure and get it right for what they'd like to see. I did forget my last bullet up there. There are a couple items that we're continuing to evaluate, like the subdivision ordinance, neighborhood, or the urban neighborhood overlay, the airport overlay. Some of those were more standard or not as impacting. Subdivision ordinance is more about development standards for new construction. So a few of those we might bring forward to P&amp;Z and council as kind of standalone. We don't want to do too many of those, but some of those that meet the current comprehensive plan that are minor in impact, like the subdivision ordinance or the overlay, which all the overlay was going to do was add multifamily within a boundary of downtown and take away parking and add more density, just to encourage redevelopment. Those are some of those low-hanging fruit that could possibly move forward if council and P&amp;Z would like to see those.
This side of the council table?
Okay, so Andrew, we've done all of this.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to have to pay for this again?
No, so I failed to mention that as well. So we've got the complete draft from the consultants over the last few months. So we've got the working document that we can pick up and run with once we finish the comp plan. It's got the formatting, it's got the sections. It's really getting that last feedback as far as uses and other ideas. But we'll be able to edit the document, bring it forward in a timely manner after the comp plan's complete.
So we don't have to go back and rework the P&amp;Z?
No, the goal is not to create a new draft, it's to tweak what we have, because it's a good document. We just need to make sure we have the right product types and the right uses and the density right. And we can handle that, bringing it forward. So it was not a waste of time or a waste of money to get the product we've gotten. We've worked with the consultants to get us to a good point, and they'll hand off all the documents, and we'll be able to pick them right up.
Okay. That was the first thing that I really kind of worried about was the fact...
Yes.
Is it even relevant now, once we go back through the comprehensive plan?
It is, yeah. The definitions and the formatting and the graphics, we've got a solid document. We just got to work out these key points.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm just concerned about the length of time, 12 to 16 months, and how that fits into the... Potentially, this council could change every two years. And so that would be after the next election. Whether the mayor and the council member is going to plan on running again, I have no idea. But comment on that.
That's always a factor. I think the goal would be to present a comp plan and a document that any council would then pick up and help implement based on the community feedback.
And so I think that's a great point, community feedback. And one of the things we're going to have to work through as we go through the comprehensive plan process is there's going to be very intentional decision points at multiple phases throughout the project, because we're going to have to make certain decisions to inform future decisions. We're going to work to get the input from the community on those. And then there's going to be some pretty challenging meetings where differences of opinion are expressed. P&amp;Z and also council are going to have to hear those differences of perspective and opinion from our community and make decisions. And then the rest of the document is going to be built on some of those foundational decisions that we're going to, that you and P&amp;Z will make throughout the process. So yes, there will be changes in makeup. And I would say also, no matter what the city is, when you get into a long project, like a comp plan or a zoning code rewrite, you do bridge elections. And very frequently, you have different people approving a document than who kicked off the process. We'll work to make sure that whatever we have through this process is reflective of our community so that it survives changes in council.
Thank you.
I think it's a valid concern, because we're about to spend a lot of time and resources, community and city organization resources. And so if we change, you know, we're giving you guidance on what direction to go right now. And if it's too drastic of a change, then we will have wasted that.
And we would expect council to appoint a subcommittee to focus on this that would go throughout the whole project. So that would be a continuation of those appointments between councils.
Okay. All right, Andrew, thank you. Anything else? Any other comments? Okay, great. Item 1F is to request future agenda items or reports from the city manager. Do we have anything, council? Howard?
I've got one, but remind me of the name of the school that you've received on New York City.
Yeah, the Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative.
Yeah, I'd like to hear a report. I've heard bits and pieces of who all is involved here and what types of things.
Yeah, I think that could definitely be an item on the discussion agenda to get an innovation team update.
Yes.
Yeah, and their project is illegal dumping, so it's something that we are very familiar with here on council. But I think, Mr. City Manager, is that something that we could look toward getting an update to council on?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am. That'd be an exciting presentation to make. A lot of fruit, a lot of things we're learning out of that. So I think it's going to be a great presentation.
Okay, good. Anybody else? All right. Moving on then to the consent agenda. Anything there that needs to come off or further discussion or questions?
Mayor, I'd like to pull off letter Y, please. Or item Y.
Consider award for demolition services contract for new city hall project?
Yes, ma'am, and I don't need any explanation on it. I'd just like to vote individually on that, please.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, I tell you what, then let's, we'll pull item Y. And let's take a motion on the consent agenda then.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item Y, as presented.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, item passes with a 5-0 vote. Let's take up item Y. Mr. City Manager? Do we have a report on that?
Well, it's a demolition of three buildings for the project that was approved a few months ago, a couple of months ago for City Hall. I'm estimating on the date when that was approved by council, so I don't remember that exactly.
Okay.
So this is just for a vote?
That's correct.
Okay.
So I'm not asking for any further discussion or information on it. I think I understand that it is demolition needed to progress with that project. And I don't have any issues with that. It's just the funding of it, the source of the funding. And so I would like to be able to vote on that item individually.
You want to use a different source of funding?
No, ma'am, I don't have anything to offer for that. I don't think that that would be helpful. I just principally stand against the way that that was funded, and so that's why I'm voting against that today.
But that's not what's on the agenda. What's on the agenda is the demolition and the demolition funding. So do you have a suggestion about that?
So specifically the...
Because I mean, I guess what I hear you saying is you're still not happy about the vote that we... the vote that we took months and months ago. Is that what you're saying?
So I voted, I voted against the relocation of city hall into that building, because primarily, it was resourced through a CO, and so that has changed, and some of that funding is different.
No, I mean, we never voted on a CO about it.
So originally, that's what was proposed, and then to go back through that, now we have a different source of funding, and so I have an issue with the form of payment, the funding. And so, my stance hasn't changed, and I don't have a specific issue with the amount of the demolition or the need for the demolition. I'm not trying to affect the project in any negative way, I'm just maintaining a stance against the project as an overall.
Howard, do you have a question?
No, I just want to call for a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the award of the contract for demolition of three warehouses at the old Amarillo Hardware Building in the proposed new city hall location at 1600 South Grant Street in Amarillo, Texas, 79101, to Lloyd D. Neighbors Demolition LLC, in the amount of $139,700.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the demolition services contract. Do we have any further questions or discussion about it? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, that passes with a 4-1 vote.
Mayor, I really appreciate you pulling that off and being willing to have more discussion on it.
I just don't, I don't understand. I think you and I need to have some discussion afterwards. I appreciate a little bit of your time to understand better. If you don't want to change the item, then I don't understand why you're voting against it. So just maybe you could help me understand.
Would be happy to.
Okay. Moving on to the non-consent items on the agenda. Item 3A is a public hearing and consideration of resolution number 412226. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor, we've got Jason Riddlesberger, the Director of Community Development, he's going to present this item. This is a pretty exciting item that does dovetail right along with the presentation you made earlier in the meeting, and it's a significant amount of money from Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs to expand one of our programs that's shown a lot of success. And I think the fact that we're getting this money and expanding our staff and personnel to do this project shows the confidence that they have in Jason, in the department, and what we're doing as a community. So Jason?
Yes, this is a grant that we've requested from TDHCA for $1,274,112, and it's going to allow us to basically double the size of our coming home team. We're going to be able to hire 10 and a half more staff for the coming home program, so we're real excited about that. We, the benchmarks that we're planning to meet with this, it's a two-year grant, so in the two years, we are going to outreach to 100 new clients, and the intent of those 100 is that we're going to house another 80 clients through this program. So it's going to be great. This is an expensive program to run, but it's very successful. Like I've reported to you guys before, the coming home program is over 85% successful in what we've been doing for well over three years now. So it works, and TDHCA has recognized the fact that we're very good at what we're doing, we're making an impact. You know, earlier, we were talking about the point-in-time count numbers, this is going to be an opportunity for us to start to really bring that number down, just as we did from 2019, so.
Council, any questions? For Jason? This is exciting. Okay, at this time, we'll open a public hearing on this item, and anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against public, I'm sorry, item 3A, you can step to the podium and have three minutes to do that now. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on item 3A.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 04-12-22-6, approving the 2022 ERA II Housing Stability Services Program Award, and authorizing the Assistant City Manager to act as the city's authorized official in all matters pertaining to the award, in the amount of
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 3A. Any questions or discussion about the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item passes with a 5-0 vote. Moving on to item 3B, a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 7973. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor, we've got Brady Kendrick Planer II here to present the item. We have a couple of rezonings here, followed by another item for Brady to present, but before Brady starts, can I just give you a guns-up for that really excellent outfit you have going on there, from one Texas Tech person among many in the room?
We might have a little rivalry happening in the city tonight at sod poodle at the Hottown Stadium, so...
I'll mention what's kind of funny about it, I'm actually a OU graduate, so...
Yeah, I should say, I'm not sure it's bad enough, Mr. City Manager.
Well, I didn't say from one Tech grad to another, I just said, one Tech grad among many in the room, way to pander.
Good afternoon, this is a consideration of an ordinance to consider rezoning Lot 12, Block 3, Johnson and McCluskey addition, in addition to the city of Amarillo in Section 139, Block 2, AB&amp;M survey Potter County, Texas, to change from Residential District 1 to Residential District 1 with specific use permit 200 for the placement of a carport within the front yard setback. The vicinity is Mars Street and Southeast 19th Avenue, and the applicant is Charles Lynch for Grace Montoya. Adjacent zoning consists of Residential District 1 in all directions, and adjacent land uses consist of traditional, single-family detached homes in all directions. The applicant is requesting a change in zoning in order to allow an existing carport to remain in place within the front yard a setback, as it was built without a permit. Section 4-10-191 accessory building regulations state that an accessory building shall have a front yard setback no less than specified for the main building. In this instance, a front yard setback for R1 is 25 feet. As constructed, the carport does encroach past the front property line and the property line with a neighbor to the north. The applicant did acknowledge the encroachments and their willingness to remove them if the SUP is approved. In examining a two-block radius around the subject tract, staff noted that there was one carport that appeared to be located within the front yard setback. Additionally, there were a number of carports in the area that were constructed with the appropriate setbacks that are existing. Although there is a limited number of carports located within the front yard setback in the area, the Planning and Zoning Commission was of the opinion that should the encroachments be removed, the request was appropriate, as the carport has a lower profile and flatter roof than a typically constructed prefabricated carport, which lessens the visual impact, and also noted that there are a number of carports in the area, although most of them do meet setback standards. Additionally, the evaluation by the real estate appraiser that is required during an SUP process stated that if approved, in his opinion, there would not be adverse effects on the property values of the adjoining properties in the area. Notices were sent to all property owners within 200 feet, and as of this meeting, one call in opposition has been received by staff. Considering the just mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request, provided the encroachments were removed across the property lines with a unanimous vote.
Questions for Brady, Council? Thank you, Brady. At this time, we'll open a public hearing on item 3B. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against item 3B may come to the podium and do so at this time.
Mayor Nelson and Council Jack Westbrook, and I rise to speak in favor of this, because I'm always for liberty, and given the opposition to it that was received, I think it's minimal, and the rest of the statements that were made indicate that a 4 vote is appropriate.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing on this matter and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 7973. Excuse me, I move to adopt ordinance number 7973, rezoning Lot 12, Block 3, Johnson and McCluskey addition, in addition to the city of Amarillo in Section 139, Block 2, AB&amp;M survey Potter County, Texas, plus one-half of all abounding streets, alleys, and public ways, to change from Residential District 1 to Residential District 1 with a specific use permit 200 for the placement of a carport in the front yard setback in the vicinity of Mars Street and Southeast 19th Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 3B. Any further discussion or questions about the motion? Brady, I'm sure you said it, but will you repeat one more time what the one opposition comment was?
So basically, a summary of the comment, they didn't even realize that the carport was illegal until they received the notice, it's a homeowner about five houses down, and they weren't even aware it was illegal, and once they found out, per the mail-out we got, then they were in opposition to it, since it's something that's not typically allowed.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
So I'm just curious, did the people who built the carport, are they the ones that live in the residence at this point in time?
Yeah, so the individuals that built the carport are currently living in this house, that's correct.
We ready to call a question? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that item passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3C is a public hearing and consideration of ordinance number 7974.
All right, this is a consideration of an ordinance rezoning of lots 20A through 22A, portion of lot 22B, lot 23A, and lots 24 and 25, Block 2, Southside Acres Unit Number 20, in addition to the city of Amarillo in Section 230, Block 2, AB&amp;M survey Randall County, Texas, to change from Agricultural District and Plan Development District 235C to Plan Development District 235E for the expansion of existing development standards and land uses. The vicinity is Office Park Drive and Business Park Drive, and the applicant is Brent Lane for Paradise Builders Custom Homes LLC. Adjacent zoning consists of Plan Development 235C and Agricultural District to the north and south, Agricultural District to the east, and Plan Development District 235C to the west. Adjacent land uses consist of multi-tenant commercial buildings to the north, undeveloped land to the south and east, and undeveloped land in a multi-tenant commercial building to the west. The applicant is proposing a change in zoning in order to be able to develop the entirety of the track with multiple office warehouse buildings and associated parking. The applicant's tract, while mostly zoned appropriately for the proposed use, is partially zoned as agricultural district, which would not allow for the proposed use, and is the reason for the request by expanding the existing development standards and allowed uses. And this is, on the screen right now is an illustration showing where the current zoning district boundary line is between the ag and the planned development. The Planning and Zoning Commission found that the request would conform with the future land use and character map, and when considering existing development and zoning patterns in the area, the expansion would represent a logical continuation of development and zoning patterns in the area of the Western Business Park, and should not have any detrimental impacts on the surrounding area. Notices were sent as required by state law, no comments have been received as of this meeting on the request. Considering the just mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request as presented with a unanimous vote.
Counsel's for Brady, questions for Brady, Council? Thank you, Brady. At this time, we'll open a public hearing on item 3C. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item may do so at this time. Seeing no one who wishes to speak, we'll close the public hearing on this matter and entertain a motion on item 3C.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7974, rezoning lots 20A through 22A, a portion of lot 22B, lot 23A, and lots 24 and 25, Block 2, Southside Acres Unit Number 20, in addition to the city of Amarillo in Section 230, Block 2, AB&amp;M survey Randall County, Texas, plus one-half of all bounding streets, alleys, and public ways, to change from Agricultural District and Plan Development District 235C to Plan Development District 235E for expansion of existing development standards and land uses in the vicinity of Office Park Drive and Business Park Drive.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that very long motion. Any questions or discussion about it? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3D on our agenda is consideration of resolution number 412227. Brady?
All right, the just mentioned resolution is to consider allowing the city manager to formalize an agreed service plan related to a landowner-initiated annexation request, and to set the public hearing for the request. The state law requires one public hearing to consider an annexation ordinance. This resolution will set the date, time, and place for that hearing as the April 26, 2022 city council meeting. Due to the city charter, the annexation ordinance is required to have a second reading as well. The land proposed for annexation is approximately 77.29 acres in Section 73, Block 9, BS&amp;F survey, and includes the West Plain High School site and adjacent undeveloped land along the loop and around the periphery of the school site. Prior to the public hearing being held, state law requires that the city and the property owner signs the approved service plan associated with the annexation. The agreed service plan is an agreement between the city and the landowners requesting annexation that details responsibilities for services to be provided by each party should the annexation actually occur. The document comes into effect and is binding if the annexation is approved by city council upon the annexation second reading. The service plan was signed by the property owners on March 21st of this year. Annexation is one of the primary means by which a city grows, and also allows a municipality to provide services to urbanizing areas and exercise regulatory authority necessary to protect public health, safety, and ensure orderly development occurs at the fringes of a city, and to ensure that the development barriers are not created that would prohibit future city growth in the future. It is worth noting that all those city services typically aren't provided to a site until annexed. Per an inter-local agreement, the Canyon Independent School District site currently has water sewer and stormwater service. The land east of the Canyon Independent School District site was not part of the inter-local agreement, but if annexed, will be allowed to use the just mentioned services adjacent to their site. Of additional note, should the land be annexed, the remaining city services, such as solid waste, code enforcement, fire, police, among others, will be available to all land within the area to be annexed. Considering the just mentioned, staff recommends that a date, time, and place for the public hearing be set for April 26, 2022, at 1:00 p.m. in the city council chambers, and to authorize the city manager to execute the agreed service plan. And if you don't mind, could you advance to the next?
I don't have that presentation, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Okay, questions for Brady? All right, thank you, Brady. Do we have a motion on this resolution?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number 04-12-22-7, setting the date, time, and place, which would be April 26, 2022, for a public hearing for a landowner-issued annexation request, and authorizing the city manager to formalize an agreed service plan for the proposed annexation in the vicinity of Arden Road and Helium Road.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 3D. Any discussion or questions about it? Hearing none, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes with a 5-0 vote. The last thing on the non-consent agenda is item 3E. Mr. City Manager?
Hi, Mayor. The water conservation program for the city of Amarillo has to be reviewed, amended, and adopted every five years. Last time we did this was 2017. Floyd, are you doing this one? Floyd Hartman, Assistant City Manager over Utilities, is going to be presenting the item, and so this can be a brief presentation, and then we can answer any questions you have, we can go as deep or shallow as you want to go.
The water reference.
Unintended.
Thank you, Floyd.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here. And yes, Jared, this is the five-year review of the water conservation plan. Just for a little correction, Julie Allegriti, the program director, is going to give this presentation.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, I didn't know if Julie was doing... So Julie Allegriti is the program director for the Utilities Department, so didn't want to leave her out, I just didn't know who was doing it.
But I did want to introduce the topic. Just know that this document is in front of you for your review, but it is a required document under a public water system, and it works in coordination with our partner agencies, especially water supply corporations like... agencies, especially water supply corporations like Cremaux, and then our wholesale customers like Canyon, but also state agencies like the Texas Water Development Board. We get a lot of, this is a required document when we do those applications there. But Julie's going to give you a brief overview of it.
All right, yes, like Floyd said, I'll give you just a brief look at it, and if you guys have any questions, I think we included the plan itself for your review. So... To the first one. Oh, okay. So, the key points that we're going to touch on is the fact that it is a comprehensive five-year plan. It does contain our goals and strategies for the different types of use, which is residential, commercial, industrial, and our main cause of concern being irrigation. Overall, our goals are to just reduce consumption and to also promote the efficiency of use.
Mayor Nelson, for personal privilege, could we move the mic closer, please?
Thank you, Julie.
Is that it? Does that work?
Yes.
Okay. And just like anything that you do, to be able to have effective measures, you have to have goals that are created in a way that you can execute them successfully. So, the way that we do that is we look at different areas, such as supply-side, demand-driven measures, and also how much conservation we want to accomplish. Looking at those, supply-side is what's under the control of the city. Like Floyd mentioned, that's our wholesale contracts to City of Canyon, that's our contract with Cremaux, and what we receive from them. Those are things that are in our control. Our demand-driven measures, that is completely up to our consumers and the dynamic pool of consumption. We cater those measures to that and how we're affected with that. And like I said, the degree of conservation that we want to see, how ambitious do we want to get, what can we actually accomplish? And so, we take all of these in developing our goals. In the supply-side, we do have in the plan 13 measures that cover different areas. They're all important measures. One of the main ones is that we do include conservation provisions in our wholesale contracts. So, if we see an increase in usage without a correlating increase in population, then that's going to be something that we'll have to take a closer look at because it is in those agreements that they will keep conservation in mind. The next slide is one of our better conservation measures, actually one that Amarillo can say we stand out because this is something big that we do, and that's our reclaimed water that we sell to XL Energy. Last year, we sold, and they reused approximately 3.5 billion gallons of that reclaimed water, and that is a very easily quantifiable and successful measure of conservation that we've been using for years, and we are, like I said, we have bragging rights on that one because that's a really big one and a good one for our city. And so, that's the supply-side. Moving on to demand-driven, so a lot of what we can do to help with those demand-driven consumer measures is educate the public, be out there, engage, be part of community events. Our Every Drop Counts program is one of the big ones that we like to push. This summer so far, I think we have 13 events or so that we're going to be at. Right now, we have our kids contest, which we love doing, and then we love bringing them back in here with you guys, because we have that in mind that that's where it starts. It starts with our kids, it starts in our community, in educating. We do still have our rain-free sensor rebate program, and it is active. It is up to $50 back as a credit on their water utility bill for any irrigation system that was installed prior to January 1st of 2009, makes it eligible for that rebate. Also, our collaborations with area agencies, we like to see our collaborations grow. Like I mentioned, 13 events this summer, a lot of them are with Center City of Amarillo. We are working with Panhandle Community Services, they provide assistance for people with bills, and so if we provide education on how to save on those bills, then everybody ends up saving in the end. And so, that is the core of our demand-driven. And then, conservation goals. So, in general, yes, we want to see consumption go down. That's the main point of it, but there are different ways that we can see if those goals are being met. And the water loss percentage is one of them, our wastewater treated and/or reclaimed is another, our peak-to-average daily use ratio, and our overall total usage numbers, quantified in different ways. And so, we also do our residential gallons per capita daily. Currently, we stand at 96. The way that's calculated is just total usage, residential, we've got, that averages, like I said, 96 gallons of usage per person per day, and our five-year goal is to see that drop to around 92. And hopefully, with these measures in place, that's something that we are going to be working towards. And then, our last one, that is the basics of our comprehensive plan, and we have it up for your consideration for, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions for Julie, counsel? Any questions about the plan?
I've got just one about the public education, information outreach part, the rain and sensor rebate program. Exactly how does that work?
Okay, so, the number-one part of it is that we have to remember that before January 1st of 2009, it was not required per code to have a rain-free sensor device on your irrigation system. So, they're technically kind of grandfathered in, they don't have to have it. After that, you do. So, you just have to be the homeowner, your system has to be older than January 1st of '09, contact us, we'll give you all the information on, we selected a few that are up to date and good, in combination, rain and freeze. Pick one out, send us the receipt, installation, proof of installation, and so we'll get all that together, we'll send it over to utility billing, and you'll receive up to $50 back on that next utility bill. So, the savings starts immediately with that $50 credit.
So, like, we moved into the house that we're in in 2019, didn't have anything on it, we put in a Rockyo controller, which automatically keeps up with all of that stuff. So, if we had turned that in, we would have been able to have gotten the $50 rebate?
Well, unless the system was installed before 2009, and then also, we, since we're relaunching the program, we did have a limited amount to see the success of it and then push it forward. We did request that people reserve a rebate, contact us, reserve a rebate. We had, at the time, we had 50 up for grabs, and so if people went out and bought it without reserving, then what if we had more requests than rebate availability? So, first is to reserve it, receive the list of sensors that are available. So, but if you would have called us...
So, they've got to know in advance, they have to contact you, they have to get the list, you've got to reserve a spot before anything can transpire.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's one of those things that needs to be, because I don't know how many people would get caught, they'd go out and do what they needed to do, and then, so I don't know how that communication, because honestly, even sitting on city council for five years, this is the first time that I've ever understood exactly how this rebate...
How it works.
So, something's getting, again, something's getting missed in the information.
Yeah, and we understand that. Another one of our measures is reviewing our conservation materials and program materials continuously to make sure that our message is clear. That's one that I saw before, and I thought, okay, that's a little weird. So, we actually have, I included the picture, the only picture in here, is that, how to do it, and what is easier than having it be numbered. Number one step, actually, there's a poster, I did not include that, but the number one step on the poster is contact us, and we'll work harder to push that message and have that be clear.
So, is that 3786025?
Yes.
Is where they should contact you?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Or they can email you at censor rebate...
Yes.
S-E-N-S-O-R-R-E-B-A-T-E, censor rebate@amarillo.gov.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. Or even amarillo.gov/censor rebate is the direct website link to all that information.
So, how many rebates are available this year?
I actually just got an email right now, that would be number one for this year. So, there's, if we're keeping it the same, then we still have 49 left.
49, so there are rebates that are still available for this year?
Yes, sir, that's right.
So, that was a good question. You did good, Julie. Anybody else?
You did great, actually, you did.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion with regard to Item 3E, counsel?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 04-12-22-8 of the Amarillo City Council amending the water conservation program for the City of Amarillo, originally adopted in 2002 and last amended in 2017.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Item 3E, the Water Conservation Plan for 2022. Any discussion or question about the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that, oh, any opposed? That item passes with a 5-0 vote. And that finishes the non-executive portion of our agenda. At this time, I would ask the city attorney to read our dismissal language.
Be glad to, since the Texas Open Meetings Act closed session, the Amarillo City Council was announced on April 12, 2022, at 3:19 p.m. under the following authority, Section 551.087, discuss commercial and financial information received from existing business or business prospect from which the city is negotiating for the location or retention of a facility, or for incentives the city is willing to extend or financial information submitted by the same.
Thank you, we're dismissed to executive session.